Good evening Mayor and Eileen, thank you for being here this evening. I know that we scheduled you to come in and speak to us about the Capitol budget. I know some members of council have some questions about the Capitol budget. We appreciate you taking the time to come in here. Also, we'd appreciate if you can kind of give us an overview as to, you know, what's going on with the city in terms of the recent flooding and what actions are taking place on behalf of the city. And then maybe you can kind of give an overview of the Capitol budget and then we'll ask you some questions from there. Thank you. The floor is yours Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you. An apologies, we're a couple minutes late. It's been a busy few days as you guys know. So the recovery work continues, I think you all saw and I think most, I think all of you at some point have been out to see the damage in many of the neighborhoods and saw the videos from Saturday night. We're so incredibly lucky in Scranton to have the personnel and the real heroes in our fire department, our police department, public works, code enforcement, they were out all night Saturday night, you know, literally saving lives. And it's just a real testament to the people that sit in the city of Scranton in these departments, that we were able to get through Saturday with no missing persons, no fatalities, no major injuries that we know of. Obviously lots of property damage and a lot of broken hearts and tough situations, but thankfully everyone's okay. And that's a real tribute to our first responders, so we just appreciate them so much and I know you all do too. So the work continued, the recovery work began on Sunday. We did do work with the city controller to do an emergency declaration so we could get a firm in to help DPW do, take out the debris from a lot of these different creek beds. On Sunday, if you remember, we were anticipating that another storm could come very quickly. So Controller Murray came out, we did some onsite bids and just did that declaration so that we could get that work started on Sunday. So that firm is called Rutledge and they started the work in real time on Sunday and they continue to do that, so does DPW. We continue to have, you know, standing water at Merrifield and at Leggitts, those are the two most impacted blocks, the three, four, five of Leggitts. Maybe four hundred is okay?
Four hundred was okay.
Four hundred is okay, three and five. Three and five and then Merrifield. Now Merrifield has that pump station, that pump station took, there was water over the roof there, so once we can get in there we'll have to assess, but I imagine we'll have to rebuild that, which was already in our plans to rebuild. But if you remember, a couple of years ago, we actually asked FEMA to buy out the homes on Merrifield at that same block. We did not, we're not granted that request, but we'll, we're continuing to look at that and a host of other things. We're working with PMA. PMA was here in the building yesterday, we had a long meeting with PMA Chief Judge, who's our emergency management coordinator, he's been at the county EMA meetings each day. PMA is at those, PennDOT is at those, figuring out what the steps are. So in the current, in the, currently we have, we think about twenty, code and fire inspectors were out again today, so we don't have a hard number on how many people are still not able to be in their homes, but we should have that soon. It's about, we think it's about 20. So those folks, we'll work with them to figure out, they're all housed right now, that's, there's no one, there's no one that is unsheltered and that's been the case. We appreciate the school district as well Saturday night, I want to make sure I mention West Scranton Superintendent Laffey agreed, opened up West Scranton overnight on Saturday for folks to be able to go stay. So that was, that was great from the school district, so we appreciate that. So we'll work on, we'll continue to work on what the options are for families that remain displaced, for those kind of 20 or so homes that it's unclear when they'll be able to go back. By and large, people, while they have lots of damage and will have to remediate and work through insurance, they're able to be in their homes, they have power, they have gas, that is great news. There will be lots more information coming from PMA, they're still working through some things. What we're immediately waiting for is PMA to announce the, a link to where residents' businesses should send in their damage so that they can, they can catalog that and then we'd be able to make the case for levels of assistance. At the city, we're doing that, we're cataloging everything from, you know, if we need to have overtime for all these things, which of course there's lots of overtime involved, those costs and also the larger things. What is the, you know, what bridges are going to need to be repaired? What's been, what roads, you know, Market at Yard is partly washed out. What is it going to look like to rebuild that? So PMA's helping us understand what it is and what form we're sending those in on so that we can make the case as a, as a region really, that we should get a disaster declaration, be eligible for public assistance from FEMA. So working with them on that, there's a lot of other things that we're hoping, different things that we can do a larger, a larger session, PMA should be the one to explain some of these details because I'm just learning them in the last couple of days. But there's different programs that if we don't get that level of public or individual assistance from FEMA, a second, kind of a second tier of assistance is an SBA loan program, they would help us work through that. And we're, we've been thinking through rescue plan funds, part of the, part of the ARPA flex that we just, a few weeks ago, got the new rules for includes disaster relief. So we can, as we, we're already going to just let you guys know, I think you already know, we're going to bring to you a revised ARPA budget to consider, it's going to have to be revised again from our draft with this, but I think potentially we would want to work with you all to use some of those rescue plan funds as disaster relief, especially if we are not anticipating that FEMA would declare this a disaster, in which case some folks would get relief. So we're waiting again for PMA to give a, give a link and we'll make sure that we push that out and hopefully we'll get that, we've been considering doing, kind of going back to those neighborhoods and having pop-ups where people who, you know, having a laptop, going door-to-door have a laptop, so people can fill those in and we can help them with that. Not everybody, you know, uses the internet, not everybody uses a computer, so I want to make sure that technology doesn't leave any of these impacted residents behind. Oh, road closures, so Market between Rockwell and Kaiser is still closed, that's going to be closed for quite some time because that's our, that's where the roadway is partially washed out there, it's not going to be open. On that, we have that structure that is, that goes over the creek, that goes over Leech Creek at Market in Yard. We had condemned it and hoped that we could take it down, the owner appealed that. We went to court yesterday to try to get an emergency demolition, we have a hearing Friday morning on that. So we are hoping that we can pull that down as quickly as possible. None of the real, we've been pulling debris out of there, but none of the real, like the arches collapsed, the real work, the real fix can't happen until that building is gone, so.
Mayor, Market is closed between where and where?
Which are in Rockwell and Kaiser.
Rockwell and what?
Kaiser.
Thank you.
Yep. Then, the, is Mary Street Bridge still closed? Like Mary Street Bridge is probably still closed, I think that's still closed. Then Merrifield, Merrifield between Jackson and Lafayette.
When it comes to that Mary Street Bridge, what's the reason for the closure there?
So it got, when, when the water came in really hard and fast and we already had, we already had Mary Street Bridge on our wishlist with PennDOT, we actually had a meeting with Secretary Carroll just a couple of weeks ago. It's a bridge that needs to be redone, but we're concerned and Raleigh Associates are out there with us on Sunday, we're concerned that the volume and speed of that water coming might have damaged it even more. And so we, as a precaution, we just closed that down. The residents that live on that street can get around, but we want to, we need to do a more full sum engineering look at that. So wanted to make sure that that's, that's closed down and we, you know, again, those are, those are some of those bigger ticket items that hopefully, you don't want a lot of damage, but we want to catalog all these things and see if we can get to that threshold where we can get that federal funding. Merrifield between Jackson and Lafayette still closed and really, you know, hoping that, hoping that we can, people can get back into those homes some point soon to be able to assess their damage, but I'm not sure when they'll be able to move back in.
Do we know what the threshold is right now to reach that?
It's 23 million.
Twenty-three?
And that's, is that Lackawanna? That's the whole?
Lackawanna, Luzerne, NYO.
Yeah. It's all of those counties. So the 23 million threshold includes the Abingtons and all that damage, includes Newton and those places, Luzerne, so it's unclear. You know, we're not the experts in it, PMA will know, they think maybe next week they would have an idea, they won't know for sure, but they'll have a better idea after their assessment as to whether, whether we should kind of hope that we can get it or whether they might tell us, you know, we're not going to get this.
So personal damage you do feel is going to help with getting us to that threshold?
The personal damage doesn't, it doesn't feed into the public assistance, it's a separate, it's a separate bucket, but PMA will be asking for all of, all of that, all that information at the individual household level to see it because there's another program that might.
Okay. Are you guys thinking of getting any of the affected residents together in some kind of group to see what kind of help it is that they need or does the city, are you thinking of anything at this point in time to give any kind of assistance that we could do within our power for them?
Yeah, so that's, we're thinking about doing those pop-ups in each of those neighborhoods and the PMA will be setting up, they, they're fairly certain that the PMA, will it be kind of a PMA outpost funded by them and that county EMA should have, it should have a location for that to have everybody be able to come centrally and get assistance and that's, you know, maybe next week they would have that. In the meantime, code enforcement, fires, inspectors, we have been out a bunch to just with individual residents and different folks to understand what they need at this time.
So these areas, I mean, these are tight-knit communities, I mean, especially down on Merrifield, if you get, speaking to one neighbor, they all know each other.
Yes.
Can we get a group together to have a discussion with them as to what they need?
Sure.
I know, I mean, at this point in time, are we condemning houses?
So the fire inspectors and code enforcement officers have been going around to those, to those folks and getting in touch with those folks. There are going to be some structures that we do have to condemn, we'll work with those homeowners on that because of the liability factor, that if we don't do that condemnation and they turn on the lights and something happens that, or they're trying, it would be, it wouldn't be good. So the utility companies and our code enforcement, our law department, our fire department, there are some, we're going to try, we're trying to keep it as minimal as possible of actual condemnations, but they're, they're still in the process of reaching out to all those folks.
Has any of that happened at this point in time?
I don't, I think, I think they have done some.
They have met with a number of residents, so they have been going out. So the utilities have pulled meters from people's houses because of the water and if the water made it over the electrical sockets on the first floor, they automatically pulled the meter. So those houses, they've been trying to talk to the residents about.
I mean, I think there's a lot of their concerns are getting through inspections, you're, it's at a point in time when most of their life was underwater and you're getting to a point where maybe the condemnations aren't helping, that's why I'm trying to see if you guys could get a group together of these neighbors to discuss what would help them the most because I think they, they're the ones that know what they need the most.
Oh, you're going to do the pop-ups, right? Together as a group, but the code and fire, I've been speaking to each of those residents, those homeowners. Those houses that may need to be condemned are, those are generally the ones, nearly all of them will be the ones that people aren't occupying right now, they're not able to be in those structures right now.
But, so I have a quick question, so before they're condemned, would the residents or the owners be allowed to go back into their house for whatever they need or able to get above that water line before, because normally when a house is condemned, you can't enter it.
Yes.
Is that conversation being had?
And actually, no one is being prohibited from going back and forth in their house even after it's condemned because people are trying to clean it and try and salvage what they can, so.
We certainly don't, we had very long conversations about this yesterday, went back and forth, the last thing we want to have to do is condemnation, but there are, there are just going to be some instances.
Microphone.
And there are just going to be some instances where that is going to be necessary, but we're not going around and slapping crazy orange stickers on their houses, we're working in, we're working again, fire and code enforcement, talking with each of these owners and talking through these things. So we can do, we could do a group, we can, we can do a group session in the different areas, that's, that we could do that in addition to the pop-ups that we're working on for Thursday and Friday.
I feel like that as opposed to the pop-ups, you might get a more in-depth discussion. I know getting, going through that process of condemnation isn't the thing that some of these people are dealing with now when they're cleaning mud out of their kitchens.
Yeah, so the, the folks that are cleaning mud out of their kitchens that are in their homes now, those houses aren't going to be condemned, this is, the condemnations are more the, the houses that are, you know, took on so much water and they're, we're still, you know, we're still pumping them out or they're, you know, right on, right on the creeks and are, you know, still have significant damage, we're not able, you know, PPL isn't able to go or will not go and turn the electricity back on. So the folks that we're talking about in terms of that level, that condemnation level, they're, they're not, they're not physically located in their, their neighborhood right now.
I think that it would be a great idea if the city, if you could somehow arrange some type of meeting over in North Scranton or even West, wherever the homes that were most affected that you said are likely to be condemned, to at least meet with those residents and give them as much information as we possibly can to let them know what's available to them, what options are available so that, I can only imagine what they're going through, I mean, people lost their homes, I mean, and a lot of them are elderly, I know several elderly and some disabled, so it's got to be traumatizing to them and I know a lot of them have a lot of worries about, you know, the future here. So anything the city administration can do to try to alleviate some of that stress and at least kind of give them some ideas or some direction as to what next steps are, some kind of timeline, what they can look for, you know, moving forward, things like that would be greatly appreciated I'm sure by those people.
Yeah, and I would say it again, we've been going door-to-door between code, fire, but being in the neighborhoods, lots of different personnel, I know we, it was, one of our fire inspectors told me today, they were on Stanton Street, I think in North Scranton, talking to people, it was the first time, the neighbors said it was the first time that anybody had come to check in on them after a flood event. So we definitely have been doing the individual work, but happy to do some group sessions as well.
At this point in time, I know there's, I'd say probably 20 to 22 homes in Kaiser Valley area and you said probably about 20, 20 or so, give or take there. How many homes right now are currently underwater or have water, not just in the basement, but possibly somewhere else? Kaiser Valley should be all clear other than some basement.
Yeah, the ones that are underwater in this, that's Merrifield, Merrifield and Leggitts, I don't, I'm not sure of any other homes that are.
Merrifield and Leggett, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, those, those folks are, they can go, no one's stopping them from going back in and out of their homes to get things, but they're not, you can't occupy those homes at this, you can't have the gas on, you can't have the electric on.
I have a question about the pump station in Kaiser, so did it work? Did it fail? Did it work somewhat? I mean, we knew there was a problem there.
The pump station's been working fine for, for, we've been keeping it up, I mean, it's been, it's been working when we have normal levels of water during, when we anticipate a big storm, we always send a pump over there as well, like a pump to assist the pump, but it's been working well. This storm, I mean, as you all know, we did not anticipate that, even if we had had our additional pump over there, we know, the pump station was working, but even with, even with that pump station working, I mean, the water came in so hard and so fast, it was over, it ended up over the pump station itself. So we haven't even been able to go back and see if the pump station is salvageable and doubtful that that is, I mean, you'd absolutely have to get new motors, there's, I can't imagine those motors being submerged in water for the last few days that they're, they're continuing to work.
So moving forward, knowing that the pump station can fail or not be able to handle a storm event like this, doesn't mean it's not going to happen again, so what is the strategy? Are we going to wait for the stormwater, the whole authority and the planning for that to address that or are we thinking ahead of time to maybe, we had to take a better look at that?
So like I said, two years ago, we asked FEMA to do a buyout for that, that block, it was, it's just inevitable that something was going to happen again, we were hoping to be able to buy out those homes and that didn't work, but we'll, we're going to look at doing that again so that we would get to a point where that particular area does not have residential, residents living in it, which would, you know, ultimately be, I think probably what, what potentially would need to happen. The pump station itself though, and I'll let Eileen speak to which of our many pieces of stormwater mitigation that's in, that's something that we're looking to replace anyway. Again, it has been working and we've, we've always focused on Merrifield when we know a storm is coming, even if we'd had our extra pump there in addition to the working pump station, it's still, it's just, it was so much water so quickly, I don't think that we would have been able to avoid those homes being damaged.
So with that being said, does the pump station turn on itself when the water reaches a certain level? Does someone have to turn it on? How does the pump station operate?
I believe it turns on by itself, but I would have to check that for you, that it just engages when it gets to a certain level, but we could check on that to be certain. Just to add, what typically happens, and I've had numerous conversations with Matt Chorba, who's from GPI, who's doing the Kaiser Valley study and of course Tom Riley, typically the problem on Merrifield is the water comes over Kaiser, right? It overflows from Kaiser Creek and comes down. That's the general scenario when we get one foot, two foot down there. What happened this time is Lindy jumped its banks about halfway up Frank and that's where all the water came and that just is what overwhelmed the entire area. So in talking to Tom Riley on Lindy, a number of years ago, the state had a project where they went from Kaiser up and they went up as far as they had money for, which, and that part was fine, up further is where it jumped its banks. Up further than that, the, I cannot describe the amount of debris that is sitting in multiple spots, it is.
This is where I live.
Is it? I mean, I was up, I, it doesn't even make sense that there was even a creek there, there's so much debris there and it found its way in another direction. So in talking to Tom today, early in conversations, but we're probably going to have to hard armor Lindy up further, probably at least up to Crisp Street. Obviously we'll have to clear out everything that's in the, in the, in the banks of the creek, up to the turnpike. The other problem, and to your point Councilman McAndrew, about the stormwater authority, there is a ton of debris sitting on the other side of the turnpike which isn't in Scranton. So what we'll need to really do is then if we could focus on that, because everybody's going to have to work together, because otherwise that debris will make its way down into where we're cleaning out now.
The other thing that happens is the water that does get into the storm drains does come up, so that Merrifield area not only is getting hit from water coming down, but it's coming up out of the basins and coming down Merrifield and Cameron and it won't pass the trail, the railroad tracks either.
Because it serves as a levee.
Keeps them, keeps that water in there.
Tom Riley said today that every adverse scenario that could have happened there happened all at the same time, right? And adding Lindy jumping its banks, the normal things that happen, the water getting stuck on the railroad tracks, all of those things happened simultaneously.
So do we know that the pump station did kick on? It was pumping, we witnessed it pumping at some point in time around?
I would have to ask, you know, that question, but I would imagine it did, but with that level of water.
That's, that was my next question, is once the water gets up so high, does the pump station fail? Does the electricity turn off to the station? What occurs?
What we believe that it just shorted it out because it was covered in water.
Okay.
So they haven't, they were trying to get it in today, hopefully they could get in it tomorrow to take a look at them, to see what we could do to get those back online. We did rent an additional pump in addition to the ones we already have, so they're actually down there sort of in a staged area because I know there's rain in the forecast a few more times, so, so that they're just nearby in the event we need to engage them.
And now the reservoirs up above Newton Road, those reservoirs, did the water even hit into those reservoirs or were those reservoirs empty and the water took different paths?
It's, and I don't really know about the reservoirs, but it seemed like when you went up and traveled around there, water was coming from every which direction. It just seemed like there was so much of it, it was just finding its own way down the mountain. And when it hopped out of the banks, it just meandered along and especially when it got down lower where we have channelized areas, it can't get back in the channel. So it was just coming through people's houses.
Has there any, has there been any work done up in there? I know there was about 40 acres that were in there, there's also the, the old sanitarium.
Oh, Lindy?
Has there been any ground changing events or vegetation changing events that have changed the paths of this water in the last two years?
Not that, not that we have, not that it has been permitted by the city, so we don't have, if there has been work going on in that area behind Newton that I think you're talking about, it's not been permitted or no permits have come, no plans have come to the city. So if it's been being done, if there's been clearance of more than, is it 5,000 square feet? I think it's 5,000 square feet, you need a permit and then after an acre, you need a DEP from us and then after an acre, larger than an acre, I believe you need a DEP permit. None of that has happened.
Were there permits given, now that you're bringing that up, were there permits given for across the opposite side of Kaiser around AZEC? So between AZEC and, can't think of the name of the road, right next, if you're, if we're looking at AZEC and Jackson Street.
On the east side of Kaiser?
On the, yeah, the, not the west mountainside, but on the Lackawanna, Little Lake side of Kaiser, there was some land, I would say at least six to 10 acres per se there that were cleared, were there, do we know if there were permits taken on that?
Cleared when?
Last two years. It used to be a wooded area alongside of Kaiser, if you were going from West Scranton to North Scranton, it would be on your right-hand side right after AZEC.
Yeah, I'd have, I would have to check in with city planning on that.
So that may be vegetation that affects that low-lying area there in Merrifield?
Yeah, I'll have to check. If you, if you have a more specific location, if we can.
I mean, it's plain as day, it used to be trees across from, I don't know if it goes down as far as, well, it's where the grass, where grass, the water comes out of.
Below grass?
And jumps the road.
Do we?
Okay.
It was all wooded, it's no longer wooded. You could see the, I don't know if it's Mitsubishi that's down below, I can't think of what the.
Below that.
The factory is, but you could see the railroad tracks that run, run along that north-south road, let me see.
Yep, I'll ask planning about that. So as soon, as soon as we have those public links, we'll be pushing that out, we'd love your help from your, you know, your channels as well to get, get those links out to people and, you know, if there's folks that, that need help with uploading things, you know, that don't have internet at home or aren't tech savvy, we can have some of our folks help with that. We want, it's, it's, the information is going to go to the county EMA and PMA, but we can help, we can help, you know, facilitate that information getting to them. So we'll let you know about that, we'll also let you know about any of the, you know, group sessions, pop-ups and then next week hopefully if the county EMA, PMA stand up a larger, larger operation with, and they, it's at that one that they would have much more information than anyone has right now about what the next steps are for potential aid. Because again, PMA's still making that initial damage assessment.
And who is the best to talk to about the pump station and the operation there?
About the pump station?
You guys are saying, yeah, you have to go back and speak with someone, but I don't know who has done the assessment.
I mean, we'll, we can get back to you on that.
So Tom Riley's group will, they will be the ultimate folks that go and look at it to see where it's, what condition it's in right now.
Okay. But we don't know what point in time it would have shut down if it shut down?
I mean, when you think about Saturday night's event, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what it looks like, what the, the tracking of the time that the pump station kicks in, when it shorts out, an event like this, again, there was enough water to cover the entire thing, so we can.
I spent an hour and a half in my basement.
Right.
Bucketting water out, I didn't even get to see how the water moved around my house, but I didn't know if we had a specific time when the, when the pump station failed, if it failed and, if it kicked on.
I mean, fail is a, is a strange word to use for something that was just covered with water in a, in a once in 200 year flood.
At some point in time it shuts off or doesn't.
Okay.
Stops working? Do we know if it stopped working?
But I mean, I think we need to, we can, we'll get you as many answers on that as we can, but we have, this is a, this is a type of event where the pump station going for 30 minutes, 60 minutes, 90 minutes, I mean, the level of water was just not such that the pump station would have been able to handle it, it's not, the, you've, you've been there, you've seen it, that, it's just a catastrophic amount of water in a very short period of time. Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, so is there anything that, on the topic of the pump station, anything that could be done in the future then? I know you feel that. I know you feel that, that likely, that needs to be fixed or replaced, so what, like, is there anything that could then prevent that from failing in the future, or be able to handle this kind of flooding?
Just to add that, once it tops the breakers, it's going to shut down here. Right, so, you know, I think the way we could mitigate it is to keep that much water from coming there. So if we can keep Lindy Creek in its banks and Kaiser, and make sure that that water is channelized coming down, you know, however we hard armor those areas of water, that's how we are able to keep it from being overtaken.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, your question about replacing it? So part of, if you recall back, GPI did a study on Kaiser Valley. So GPI is now engaged in doing the actual engineering. Part of that project is the pump station. So, and I guess that, you know, the question that'll play out there is whether we reach the threshold for public assistance, would that be funded by PMA? Or currently, right now, it's teed up to be funded by ARPA. So that's to be determined by what PMA determines.
But the plan either way is to replace it, yes?
I think we should probably jump into the capital budget now, since there's probably only nine, 10 minutes here left. Did you want to give a quick overview of just highlights, hit the highlights, and then see what questions council might have about the capital budget?
Yeah, so we, as we know, the capital budget projects out five years for capital projects. Many of you have seen this evolve in our joint tenure with many of the, one of these line items are things that, you know, we've been working toward and working on. None of the projects that you see here are things that by voting for this budget, council's not saying, yes, go ahead and do this. There are many, many steps of bids, plans, bids, contracting, that would have to be done jointly with council to get to each of these things. So the capital budget is an incredibly important planning tool for all of us, and it shows our priorities and where we're trying to go, and where we're trying to take the city over the, you know, short, medium, and hopefully some of these, obviously the long term. But none of these pieces are things that are written stone. These are projects that we hope to be able to get to, hope to be able to fund, but they are, you know, they're not, they're not things that are already contracted or contracted by default once the capital budget is passed. So lots of, as you see, there's the building and maintenance pieces. We're very focused on wanting to make sure that we are being good stewards of City Hall and this incredibly beautiful building. As you all know from the rescue plan, we're in other, and rack piece from the state, we put together some very good funding sources to work on the towers and the roof, and have been doing some work inside. I think we're fortunate that the roof is the main, the roof and the towers have been the main pieces that need to be done. And we really want, we're really hoping that over the course of the next few years, we're able to get that done and make sure that this building is as solid, as usable, and as beautiful as it can be in that regard. This was in the capital budget last year to do, to look at an operation, an expansion of this building, to, you know, we need an assessment first to see if that makes sense to us. It's, we're maxed out here, as you all know, this is a great building, it was built in 1888, it's mostly hallway. We, we're at our capacity in terms of our operations. So as we look to the future to hopefully, you know, grow the population of Scranton, grow our ability for the city to offer services, we need to be able, to grow, we think, into using this building and also be growing into another modern building. The other piece of that would be, not meetings like this with council, this is the historic chamber, and I would imagine city council would remain here, but the public access is limited in this building that is so, you know, 140 years old. We would like to see if we might be able to expand for other public use, having a more accessible building for some of that, the in-and-out from code enforcement, in-and-out from, for authority meetings, boards and commission meetings. So that's what we want to, we want to look at. Again, any of those pieces we would bring to you individually, and that would be, you know, obviously a very robust discussion over time with council and the public. The, you know, lots with police and fire, you know, continuing to want to make sure that their operations are safe and modern, and making sure their vehicles are the same. It's really important to us that we plan these things out over time so that we're not hit with, we avoid hitting with, we need, you know, three fire trucks in one year, that would be very difficult. Also, with supply chain realities, you've got to plan these things out and be able to know what you're looking for, because it can take, you know, a year or two to get some of these types of vehicles, and that's for police, fire, and then DPW, you see the same pattern. DPW, we're looking for kind of a host of mid-level equipment to help modernize our operations and make them more efficient. The same with parks, we have a few of those types of things where we'd like to, we'd like to be able to be more efficient with some of those operations. Speaking of flooding and storm water, there are a lot of projects that you see in the capital budget. You guys have, again, seen these in prior years, most of you, but we continue to want to fund those projects and keep our eye on the ball with those. Same with the streetscapes, we've got funding for those. We need to supplement rescue plan funding and other funding with some of our own match dollars. Those match dollars need to come from somewhere. We've got to make sure that those stay planned out over the course of time. And our parks projects, I would always highlight, we've got exciting, you know, exciting upgrades right now going in Novembreno and the mini park in north Scranton at Connors, and then just on a side note, not in here, but the Pocket Park, the landscaping has finally started. We're very excited to see that. Scranton Tomorrow has the lead on that project, and the north Scranton/Little League, that playground is up. They've got a couple of, they met a little bit of a hiccup on some things, so it's not that the ADA piece isn't completely done yet, but it's exciting to have that there. So as you know, more to come on the parks pieces funded primarily through, made possible by the rescue plan. Those are in there. And, yeah, then some IT pieces as well that we'd like to do, but, you know, we'll only do what we can, we won't be able to do all of this all at once. Eileen, do it.
Yeah, and, you know, as you'll see as you go through here, there is countless grants that we've applied for, the applications have come through, many of which of those grants are funded, and we've managed to be really effective at marrying those grants to ARPA funding in order to get the, you know, leverage our money the best way that it can. You know, as the mayor pointed out, the streetscaping, we have a lot of ARPA dollars, there's other grants that we have applied for, you guys have seen come your way. So a lot of that will be based on, we've met with PennDOT, we've had a conversation, a great conversation with PennDOT about how that looks, what next steps need to go forward, talking to them about their requirements and what we need to do. You know, obviously, PennDOT is looking for more traffic counts, that's the biggest public outreach, a lot of communication. So, you know, that's how the walkability study will play out. And as far as storm water, we have a very robust series of projects going on. We have multiple engineers involved. We have two out for bid right now, Manuka and north Scranton, or it's one project, and west Scranton is another. We're also looking at Tripp Park, that is, Tom Riley is doing that one himself, the others we put out for bid. It's obvious we need to do these projects as quickly as possible, and more obvious after this past weekend, but we're looking to get as much engineering support as possible. HRG is doing our east mountain project as well.
And what were those again? What were the few projects? You listed a group of projects.
The Manuka?
Manuka?
Yeah, Manuka. Manuka and north Scranton, I think, are in the same RFP, and west Scranton is in a separate one, and Riley Associates is designing Tripp's Park. So those bids will be back in a couple of weeks.
Eileen, I noticed in here that we're, I know initially there were concerns about ARPA funds for Na'od Park, and now there's $3 million included of ARPA funds for the Na'od Park Pool Project. Can you explain how we're able to use that now?
Yes. The rebudget will be, in the next couple of weeks, we will be sending it back. So if you recall, on the original revenue loss budget, there were two line items on there. One was provision of government services, $2.3 million-ish dollars. The other was for Kaiser Valley, it was a stormwater project. That was matched for what was called a brick grant. We did not apply for a brick grant because it was not, it was not something that would work. So those two pots of dollars were, will be repurposed. Three million of it would go towards Na'od. A little bit of it, well, not a little bit, but close to 2 million would go, hopefully, into augmenting the project on the building.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add, I forgot a piece. So we do, if you recall, we have an LSA for $1 million for design of Na'od. The bid for the engineer was less than $500,000, so what the goal would be is to go back to the Commonwealth Financing Authority and repurpose that last 500,000.
Okay, so the 3 million of ARPA funds will be the match for the rack beat, the $3 million rack beat grant?
Hopefully, three and a half. That would be the goal we'd put in, 3.5 and 3.5.
Oh, wow, okay, so that'll be 7 million?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Now those...
Every revenue loss, yes.
The water projects that you were talking about, Tripp Park, north Scranton, are they, they're not included in this capital budget that we have in front of us, are they? Is that something you're currently working on?
Yeah, that, we're not quite that far yet, so it's not in this budget. They would be, so they would be funded out of ARPA unless we get, if you remember, in the spring, we applied for a $20 million H2O grant. So if we are fortunate enough to get that or any part of that, we will mix ARPA and that H2O grant together. Otherwise, we'll have to go straight ARPA.
Okay, there are two, tonight on our agenda, we have a Lackawanna Ave grant for up to 7.7 million for street safes, roads, things like that. And we also have the Lackawanna County piece, or the Lackawanna Ave piece for the wall repair. Is any of the wall repair in this grant that we're looking at tonight? It's two separate things, or can you explain?
It's actually three things. So there's two grants, so we applied for a grant for the wall at the Radisson, and if you recall, the county had a grant?
Correct.
So the county gave us administrative control of that grant. So that's $600,000-ish thousand for the wall piece. The Safe Streets for All piece is Lackawanna, Franklin, and Mifflin as well. So that's a much larger project. And that's only applied for, we don't actually have that piece. And that's a federal grant, correct? And the other, for the wall, we have that money, that needs to get permitted by PennDOT.
Sounds good. Before you leave tonight, I'm going to request that if council could get a list of the grants that we've applied for, the grants that are still pending, and the grants that have been awarded at this point, so before you go, I meant to say that. Jumping topics, there's some, $125,000 for the Sorenti Center. Last year, I know in the capital budget, I believe it was, was it $250,000 for the Sorenti Center? Did we do any of those improvements? Where are we at when it comes to the Sorenti Center? Are we still waiting for grants?
So that $125,000 is an LSA. So currently, right now, we're in the end stage of doing HVAC up there, and the HVAC was done out of ARPA dollars, so that's not quite done, so that had to happen first. Yeah, that would have been in last year's capital budget.
There was just HVAC up there?
Yeah.
Mayor, how about the, let's address the white elephant in the room. The city hall expansion, $1.8 million is the estimated cost. Are we basically talking about the building next door? Like, what's the plan? What's the vision, I guess?
Yeah, and again, this was...
And the rationale behind it, please? Thank you.
Yeah, this isn't, this was in the capital budget last year, this was, you know, we discussed this a little bit last year as well, so this isn't new as a concept. Fidelity is in that building, as we know, they are moving, and I think that, when we really think about the long term and the long-term footprint of the city, I think we really need to take a look at whether or not we could, we could get that building as a city asset, and I think that would really solidify the city's presence in the downtown and our administrative operations, in addition to fire, of course. As a, you know, you have fire, you have city hall, and then you have another newer building, as I said, that would be, you know, modern, AD accessible in a modern way, very good for, you know, the type of business that residents need to do. You know, there's no, there's no steps to get there. I really think that having that kind of, that L shape, having those three major assets for the city would help us make sure that we are, that this is the corner, this is the block, this is the building that anchors the city, the city of Scranton for generations to come. I think if we, if we don't think about expanding, we're going to exceed the space that we have here. We also, you know, the level of access that we need for the public is going to be very difficult to achieve in this building. It's just the reality of, you know, of the way that it was constructed, and to make every piece of it as accessible as we'd like it to be, could, I think, I think would reduce the historic nature of it, right? There's just things, there's assets within here, you know, we have the one elevator. If we have to do a larger elevator, what other assets in there in this building, what other rooms are we going to have to compromise? So I think potentially having that more modern building in addition to this building could be, could be really, really beneficial. An additional idea for not just having public meetings, some of the public meetings there, boards and commissions and authorities perhaps, and, you know, public meetings like Mr. Schuster you mentioned about doing for the neighbors and things, would be, we don't have a true command center for the city. So police has, you know, its own version of a kind of a crisis command center, but it itself is not as robust as maybe we should have for a city of our size. That's the type of thing that I know our public safety chiefs would like to see the city have, I would like to have, see the city have, the type of thing that we could build out if we had a building like that.
Mayor, do we know what the tax revenue is generated from that building?
I think it's something about $45,000.
Excuse me?
About $45,000 roughly.
$45,000 annual in tax revenues, okay.
Right, so I think something that, you know, anytime a building comes off the tax rolls, that's, we don't like to see that, but we're seeing a lot of growth in the city. We're seeing, we're continuing to see houses, even though the market for housing is tough right now, you're seeing more high mortgage rates, we're still seeing a lot of people buying homes in the city, and those are turning over. We're still seeing lots of new business starts, we have businesses coming into the city and building. I think that we'll continue to see good revenue coming in in the city and taking, if we were to have that building next door off the tax rolls, I think, given the work on the tax assessment that's coming up, given the work that we hope to get a firm to help us with, to perform a HUP test, I think we would more than exceed that loss.
Does the city have the right of first refusal on the purchase of that building? Do we know that? Is it presently up for sale? Is there a price on it? Do we know?
I do not believe it's presently up for sale.
When, do we know when fidelity plans to take over, I guess would be the Electric City Building, I guess I'll call it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, like any, you know, any large renovation, that one's going to take some time, so I'm not sure exactly when that will be, but...
Okay. So we, sorry.
I want to take, you know, to speak to the capital budget in general. Every year, I take a good look at it. I do appreciate that, and I never have a problem with providing the equipment and resources to public safety, public works, and the parks. All right? These protect and serve the community. But like last year, I still have a problem this year, and I know it's in the thought process, or it's going to be investigated. process or it's going to be investigated, but purchasing the building next door, with, with being said that, you know, we're trying to restore this beautiful building. And we hope we have enough money to do it. I've heard that. I've heard that from administration. We're working towards that. But to already target, or I don't know where you get the number, 1.8 to buy the building next door, the Fidelity building, I, I just don't, I don't agree that we're at that point or should be at that point. And with that said, so Fidelity handles our ARPA money anyways, right? For the most part, or no?
Yep. Our rescue plan account is with Fidelity. That was a bid and a work that you guys approved.
Did they receive ARPA funds to purchase a new building?
To...
Or no?
Purchase their new building?
Did they receive, yeah. Did they receive any money from us?
No. They received state, they received state RACP funding to assist with that project.
And...
We supported them in their application. We thought, think, still think that having that building renovated and full of workers all day long is a, is a good thing. But it's a state grant that they received.
And they handle, so how about, do you know what, how much interest we've made on ARPA with them, reported from them? Is that a number that...
I can give you the exact number, but if it's over $100, I don't have the exact number.
So what does that money allow to, to be used for? I'm, I'm sure there's criteria for that, right?
So, well, so it would be, it's for the general purposes of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
So the $45,000 from the tax rolls that we spoke about earlier, is that the total amount of taxes, or is that, is that city and district?
That was city and school district.
City and school district.
It did, not, yeah, the county was separate. The county was separate from that number.
Okay, so that's just city, school, district. All right. Are, are we out of space currently in this building?
Yes.
You said about emergency operations. There's a piece for emergency operations, a study for $100,000. Is that to study the feasibility of emergency operations in the building next door? Or is this emergency operations in some other...
Is that under police? So there will be an LSA grant coming, your, to council next week. And the LSA grant is for the purposes of studying space and capacity and how it would look in this building and, and the building next door if that was the route that people chose to take.
So that's, if it was to be the building next door, this study will cover that?
If...
If it is to be the building next door, this study will cover the feasibility of that?
That would, that would... Yes.
So the, the emergency operations, emergency operations center that you see figuring, trying to look at what that would look like, if we were to expand City Hall potentially, we would want that emergency op center in that new building.
Okay. I know there was different places, like, I mean, the Sorenti Center was always discussed as being that. I know we're, we're talking about a area up at, near the CTC and now this building. That's why I asked that. So this study would be for that building next door?
Yeah, and again, it's just like, just like the, we have a million dollar LSA for the design of the Naog Pool Complex, and we're not going to use it all. $100,000 for this feasibility study. That's a, that's a ballpark. We would hope it wouldn't be $100,000, right? We just, with the capital budget, we do have to do some, you know, a little bit of guesswork and rounding, but we'd, we'd hope that it wouldn't cost that much.
Okay. Again, switching gears, Green Light Go. They're on here. I would imagine it's the, the second year they're on here. When are we going to begin these projects? I, I was under the impression that we would have already started the Green Ridge and Wyoming Avenue.
Well, all of the funding is in place, but this is done through PennDOT. So there's a lot that has to go into getting through our permitting process and all. But the, that funding is in place, so we should, I'm hoping to see that move in, not the too distant future.
Okay, so both, both of those projects, both Green Ridge, Wyoming, and the Cedar Avenue piece, we have the funding for those. It's just waiting on them. All right? Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the mayor or Eileen on the capital budget? There are none?
I'm sorry. And I did have a, a couple. I did have questions on the Green Light Go, too, but I believe those were just answered. And then, I know there are questions about the, the need for more electric vehicles. So there's, there are an additional four that were placed in the capital budget. Would you be able to speak to that?
Sure. So the goal is to not have our staff that goes out in their own personal vehicle. It's a lot of risk, a lot of, lot of liability. So there are other individuals that are still going out that take their own personal vehicle. So the four would, would cover that. So the, the idea would be is there's a lot of grant money out and about right now. So we would wait and apply to see if we were able to get funding to defray the cost of those.
And the ones that we have currently, I know those are being utilized by code enforcement. So what department would these people...
Same department. Yeah, we have, we have the 10 inspectors, but we also have a sign inspector, we have a health inspector, we have someone that does weights and measures, and we have the two managers that also go out. So there's, you know, other people that are traveling.
I mean, I did just want to make a comment that I was happy to see about some of the changes to City Hall in here, including the money going towards improving our ADA compliance. That's something that we've been asking for and that residents have been asking for for some time to make the building more accessible. You know, I do understand your point about, you know, perhaps another building already being accessible without having to make those renovations. I would like to focus more on the renovations of City Hall first before the purchase of another building. I see that as coming as, as the priority. So, you know, I understand that this was on last year, like you explained in that, you know, that's not something necessarily for immediate consideration, like tomorrow we're, we're buying a building. But I just wanted to voice my concerns that I did want to see a lot of those renovations take place first. And I know that, that's something that's happening over, you know, several years, a period of time. We don't have the money just to do all the, make all the changes to City Hall at once that, that we need to. But that's what I wanted to say with regards to that.
Yeah, the City Hall ADA compliance is a, an line item. It's the, it's the last one on the page one for building and maintenance. Looking to potentially use CDBG federal funds to, to work on some of those upgrades. We absolutely need to do those upgrades here as well. That's very true. There's a lim, there's going to be a limit to some of the, the upgrades. There's going to be some things with ADA that would, I think, deteriorate this building in a way that it would be better potentially. You know, we have to look at this and, and work on it if we, we did both, where we did as much ADA as we can here and also had a more modern building that was, was more turnkey.
And then I, there was one thing I just wanted to go back to on the Green Light Go, actually, because it, it just brought up, you know, changes in, in traffic signals and making intersections more safer. And so I didn't really see in here what I'd hoped to with a larger sign plan for the city, because I know that's something else that's, that's been asked about. And I thought that the most recent response we received was that we didn't have the capacity for that nor, you know, maybe the, the funding to do that wider scale program at this time. So where does, where does that fit in?
So for, just street signs, not being like Go, but street signs.
Right, just, yeah.
Yeah, so street signs, we've been funding through our operational budget. We don't have it in here as a capital budget. It's something that we, you know, fund through, through DPW. There's a, you know, line item for it in the operational budget. We're, we do have a capacity issue, and we'll speak, speak about this in our, in our budget discussions. Our traffic maintenance, you know, we came in, there were two. We added kind of one and a half more. We still don't have enough bandwidth in traffic control under DPW to get all of the work done. You know, traffic happens, and forget about the type of event we had Saturday. On a daily, weekly basis, our traffic team is, is pulled away, you know, nearly every day on some emergent issue where a light went out here, a light went out there. That takes them off of a crosswalk that they're painting. It takes them off of the street signs that they're putting up. They put up the banners for our community events. So we have a, we do have a labor limitation. I think we need to solve that. We also are, we can fund the actual signs themselves with the operations budget. It's the, I think, the labor piece. And we, we will be putting out a, an installation RFP. So we think we can make those signs ourselves, but we need to, to farm out the installation because at the current, current labor level, it's, that, that team is just maxed on a hourly basis. There's so much that, that they need to do. So we'll, we'll talk with you guys more as we put the budget together and see what, what we, what we think we need from a personnel perspective.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's all, Eileen. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and Eileen for coming in here this evening, updating us on the unfortunate flooding disaster which occurred over the weekend and answering questions on the capital budget for, for council. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Council President. We, we did get just a quick update while we were here. The county emergency management should have a link tomorrow, hopefully by lunchtime, that we will be able to, to send out so that hopefully we'll be able to get that out in the next, you know, 18 hours or so.
Great. Thank you for that as well.
Excuse me, Mr. King. While you're saying that, so the county, I got, so just to clarify for everybody out there that may have property damage, we have, the county is collecting information on damage that's occurred. Is the city also collecting? So where, if someone has damage to their home, their car, so be it, where should they go?
They're going to, that's the link tomorrow that the county emergency management, working with PMA, will collect that. So, and then we're, then the city's, city's responsibility for, I mean, pushing that out so that we, we, you know, help, help get that word out. We're doing the public infrastructure damage assessment. So roads, bridges, pump stations, those types of things. That's, that's the piece that's in tracking, not just those big things, but the little things, too. How much, you know, how, did we have to buy more, you know, road closed signs? Did we have to buy more cones? All, all of those things count toward this, this, this event. And so we're tracking those things from the city side.
Now, have you gotten any volume of calls or anything into Scranton 311? Because I feel like that was put out there, send in any kind of damage to 311.
Yeah, on Sunday, on Sunday, I wanted a place where people could send things. We haven't gotten a lot. Once we get this link, we're going to go back to those folks and make sure that they're putting those in there, too. On Sunday, we wanted, we just, we wanted an action item for people and to start collecting those. We didn't get too many. And we, you know, I'm sure you guys, too, your, your phone blows up, people are sending pictures. When we get that link, we'll be able to, to go back to those people and have them put those photos, those addresses and details into that larger system.
Okay, and how, how are we going to let the people know that that's, I don't know if you want to take the opportunity tonight to let them know this is how it's going to roll out?
Yeah, and that's where, the link that the county will put out tomorrow, we'll, we'll push out from, from the city and make it clear on, you know, in a press release and with social media and with folks. We're also going to do a flyer, a physical flyer, and take those around the, the most impacted neighborhoods. Kind of mix of door-to-door and then also, you know, holding kind of pop-ups in those, those very much affected areas on Thursday and Friday if people want to come by and get, get those flyers. And again, we'll have, we'll have laptops available so that if they need some assistance to, with the technology, we can work on it with them. And then we'll, we'll get more information soon, hopefully, about a PMA, a PMA center, you know, kind of pop-up center next week that we hope that, we hope that they do. I'm not sure that would be at the point where PMA would potentially have more information and then be able to set better expectations about what type of aid Lackawanna County